Okay, very good. We have a quorum. It's called to order the Fordord Reuse Authority Study Session for Friday, July 13, 2018. Pledge of Allegiance, if Senator Moning would lead us, please.
Where's the flag?
Should we visualize the flag?
Yeah.
Okay, please follow me.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sure somebody was wearing a flag pin.
Yes, Chair, that's an artifact of yesterday's Veterans County Advisory Committee meeting, where they took the flag next door.
Oh, okay. Okay, very good. Okay, at this time, I'd like to welcome everybody and thank you for taking time out of your day to come to this meeting. And Senator Moning, thank you for being here. I know you've got a very busy schedule, and we'll try not to waste your time. Okay, at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Ingram.
So, good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here today. We do have a full day ahead, and as you know, I will be facilitating today's meeting. This is a study session for the Board, and the purpose of the session is to provide for discussion among the Board members regarding the draft transition plan and the planning process. Following the presentation of some brief information and some key questions to be considered today, the Board will then have the opportunity for discussion and comment. No action about approving the draft transition plan is being requested today. It will, however, be very helpful in the Board discussion, excuse me, if the Board can provide comments and any direction to FORA staff about the issues or content that's included in your packet. The session is being recorded and will be posted on the FORA website next week. Most of you have seen numerous times the materials that we'll be going through again today. This process has been ongoing for approximately two and a half, almost three years. It has been the subject of discussion at administrative, technical advisory committee, and Board committee meetings, and Board meetings. And on June 8th, you got a lot of more information and had some limited time for comments at that point. Today, I'm hoping that we will have a very vigorous discussion of the issues and the This is not the only opportunity for either Board or public comments, just a reminder. There will continue to be opportunity for public comment until there's a Board decision. And as noted on your agenda, there will be public comment opportunity today at the end of each segment, and this structure can also allow the Board members to consider any of the public comments during the discussion. Comments or questions about the draft transition plan are very welcome and encouraged, and they can be emailed to planning@fora.org, or mailed to the FORA office, or people are more than welcome to call the FORA office or fax to the FORA office. Some very quick reminders, excuse me, I've got allergy problems today. Some quick reminders about what rules of the road are for today. Let's please recognize and respect that there may very well be differences in thoughts and opinions. Let's be courteous to one another. Let's suspend judgment by listening to each other in this discussion. Let's please stay focused on the group conversation rather than individual or side conversations, because those divide people's attention. And to the extent possible, please be succinct in both your comments and your questions. We will take a break at one point, and I'll be checking with you on when that will actually occur. Do you have any questions for me at this point, or any comments for me? Okay, thank you. I'd like to then get started and turn this to the Executive Officer, Michael Hulamard, for a moment. And Mr. Hulamard, if you could please provide us an overview of today's session, and then I'll ask for any questions on Mr. Hulamard's comments. Then I will ask Ms. Damon to please provide some information that will be on your slides, and then we'll move immediately into the discussion. Thank you, Mr. Hulamard.
Thank you, Candy, and I'd like to just note that because Candy's introduction was so thorough, mine is going to be extremely brief. I just want to remind the Board members that last month, we talked about the history and background of the economic and regional recovery from the closure of the former Fordord, the importance of the regional recovery programming being a part of regional resources and regional decision-making. All of those decisions that occurred in the early 1990s have carried through to today, including this Board unanimously concluding and making the goal of the transition planning effort to come up with a program that implements and continues the regional economic recovery and focuses on the work of implementing the base reuse plan with a particular note that was introduced by our colleagues from the city of Monterey to sustain the focus on creating more affordable housing for the region that would benefit all in Monterey County. I wanted to note that that continues to be the reason why the state both created the Fordord Reuse Authority in 1994, and then just a half a dozen years ago, extended the Fordord Reuse Authority to complete this regional effort. But within that regional effort, the state was smart enough in working its leadership to allow for all of the individual decision-making, where the jurisdictions decide who they do business with, when they do that business, and a great deal about how those individual developments are crafted and how they're put together. So within our consensus approach that's mandated by state law and regional work, we have individual decision-making and determination. That has been the message we at staff have received from this Board and our leadership at the state and elsewhere about finishing the economic recovery effort. And so I'll leave my comments at that, because I think today, we will have a shorter PowerPoint presentation than in the past, and I see everybody applauding, right? So that the active and engaged conversation can begin. Thank you, Candy.
Thank you. We also have Senator Moning with us today. Would you like an opportunity to make any comments?
Well, thank you, Madam Facilitator, Mr. Chair. I just want to express my appreciation to the task force and FORA Board members, staff, community stakeholders, for moving things forward in these very important conversations. And just to underscore something that Candy said, we're not going to all agree on everything at this point, but this is our opportunity to have principled engagement. For me, what will be very interesting for me today is to hear from the various stakeholders' visions for moving forward. Necessarily, some of that includes looking to the past, but our task here is really to look to the future. I have just a couple of short comments on the process. I did want to just take this opportunity to share a California State budget update. I am pleased to report that our larger budget, the largest one ever passed in the state of California, to support now the fifth strongest economy in the world if we were a nation. We've passed the U.K. recently with about a $2.4 trillion gross domestic product. We're supporting that with a budget of about $138 billion general fund expenditures and a total budget of about $200 billion. Through the Governor's frugality and leadership, we have the largest reserve ever, $16 billion in reserve, anticipating that our economic recovery will not always continue to have us in a growth pattern. We're nine years out from the recession. Most cycles are about seven years, so we've tried to be prudent in our fiscal planning for the future. One area of interest particularly for FORA and our communities is the budget allocation this year in the state budget to support operations and maintenance funding for the Central Coast Veterans Cemetery. This helps bridge a gap of federal funds we're not realizing in terms of not the number of internments that we expect we will see over time. And so with the support of the Secretary of Cal Vet, Colonel Dr. Vito Imbasiani, who's visited us now several times here in the Peninsula, the state budget includes ongoing support, not just this budget year, but in-out years for some of the operations and maintenance. So that is in addition to the over 3 million state funds that we've secured in recent years. So I just want to thank Candy and the Veterans Foundation for their continued leadership in moving forward. Phase II development is on schedule and will be moving into environmental study, planning in the next phase. So again, thanks to all the jurisdictions acknowledging Seaside's original transfer of that land, along with Monterey County, to bring that dream to reality. In terms of our task in front of us today, the transition planning, I think it's important for me to echo a refrain that one option that we look at is some future role of FORA that would require state legislation. I have made no commitment to that pathway, because the predecessor to any such decision is the work that you're doing. We need to see what a transition plan looks like. I think it's also important to point out, there's no magic wand of the state coming in with some rescue vehicle to move things forward with the dissolution of RDAs, of the development associations, that in a sense, many in Sacramento look to FORA as being an RDA. And the legislature has acted to take RDAs away from all other communities around the state. FORA is, of course, unique in its founding, in its establishment, in its operation. But I think it's just very important to recognize, there's no guaranteed path at the state level. That said, I'm going to remain fully engaged with the transition partners, with FORA, with community stakeholders, and for me, it's going to be very important to inform my ultimate decision-making on what I am hearing, what I'm hearing today at this meeting, what I hear between meetings, and I just want to invite the continued engagement with my office of all stakeholders as we look to identify and shape a path forward for the multiple responsibilities that have been under the umbrella of FORA. The regional governance has been unique. I know many have seen it as burdensome. I know there's some jurisdictions that say, "We really don't want to be part of this in the future," but this is a regional resource, and there are varying degrees reflected by weighted voting of connection to this regional resource. But now is the time for people to speak up, and I want to make sure that I'm heard. I want to acknowledge Nicole Hollingsworth with my office, who has been present in many of the transition meetings, the FORA Board meetings, and is a direct liaison to me to share your thoughts. And I think I will stop there. Again, I look forward to hearing from all stakeholders in mapping a pathway for the future that respects the autonomy of local communities, the interests of local communities, our environmental preservation, the removal of blight, and the management of water resources, transportation resources. I think it's fair to say, what we face is complex. It is many moving parts. And I do want to thank again the FORA staff, particularly the Executive Officer and Attorney Sherri Damon, for helping capture the essence of what is being discussed and shared at the transition task force meetings and what will be presented today. But I aspire for the same thing that's been voiced, respectful, principled engagement, and let's lead with concrete suggestions and proposals that people can react to. It's easy to say why you don't like something. It's a little harder in the political process to put forward something that you favor and to make a case for it. So that's what I look forward to hearing, and again, Mr. Chair and Executive Officer, I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any Board questions, comments for either Mr. Hulamard or our Senator? All right, then I would like to go ahead and move on and ask Ms. Damon to please present some initial information that will set the stage for our discussion.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Yes, it's me again. If only I really got paid by the minute these days. No, I'm going to keep it short. Here's our history. I thought it was worth keeping this screen up. This is where we've been, where Fordord was. It's significant overall in history. So today, we're going to talk about what's new, what has happened since June 8th. We're going to go over, review the background context, and in particular, I think the Senator referenced the nine-year recession cycle. So it's important, I think, to keep the numbers in front of everybody, because those numbers are projections, they're based on the land use jurisdictions' numbers, they are subject to change by 2020. They could, you know, if development does not occur, the fees are not generated, your costs go up to finish the plan. So I think it's important to review that. We're going to talk about the key issues, the overarching policy issues, and then focusing in on the chapter discussions. I'm not going to be re-presenting everything that I presented last time, so hopefully you brought your slides and your questions with you. So what do you have what's new? What's new in your packet are new jurisdictional assignment charts. So at the June 8th meeting, I presented, we presented chapter charts, a compilation of contracts, obligations, and notes by subject matter. Now you have charts in your Board packet that are, where we've tried to sort those by jurisdiction, so a jurisdiction can take those charts and look at what the projected assignments are by jurisdiction. They are draft documents. I have received some oral comments on them about why aren't certain things included in certain areas. I think those are great comments, and the more information and comments I get about that, the more refined and better those charts become. I apologize in advance for your initial Board packet. They were in kind of microtype, and so we went back and we did a reformat. So you have on the dais before you a reformatted version, which is in a legal size. Hopefully, it's a little more readable. We've also posted that on the web for the public's consumption as well, to make it a little bit, I can have the applause now. No, just teasing, just teasing. Much better, right, okay. But again, I'm going to reiterate, these are draft documents, as were the charts that were initially sent out with the June 8 port. Public comment. So we had requested at June 8th, public comments be submitted by the end of June. We received only three letters, no emails from the public at all, one from the county, one from Seaside, and one from Tamsie. That was at the end of June. Yesterday, at about 11:55, we received a letter from Land Watch raising some questions or issues and comments, and all I can say is, I wish they had attended the two and a half years of process, because many of the questions that were raised have been addressed and will continue to be addressed as we move forward, and this Board finalizes the final direction that the transition plan will take. So that letter is also on the dais before you. So in review, these are your transition plan goals that the Board in November of 2017 committed to, completing the base reuse plan economic recovery, implementing the mitigations, implementing the base reuse plan policies, including affordable housing and jobs housing balance, collaborating to maximize and leverage our resources, the regional resources, and committing to a fair and equitable share. I think it's really important to start from a fundamental understanding of what that is, and so one of the major key issues we're going to be talking about is what that is in terms of what is the economic recovery and what are those base reuse plan mitigations? I think it's, well, let me say it a different way. Over the course of the last several months, I've heard varying interpretations about what will be required to be completed post-2020. Some believe that the base reuse plan is gone when FORA goes away, and that would be true with respect to the master resolution as well, that all of those fundamental underlying documents expire when FORA expires. That is an issue that this Board needs to address and grapple with. If that's not the understanding, if we're not going to finish everything that we started, we need to know that now as part of the transition planning process, because if we aren't on the same page, it's going to lead to issues in the future. So numbers, let's talk about those numbers. This is what we've shown. These numbers are based on our capital improvement program. That is what we have been, at FORA staff, looking at to guide us in terms of what needs to be completed. These are the projections based upon development projections that every single land use jurisdiction has given us. These are not FORA making up the numbers. These are what your jurisdictions have said. We are going to, we hope to develop A, B, or C in terms of the amount, and then that all translates into a number, which then goes into the capital improvement program. So you're looking at, based on 2018, 2019 projections, $132.3 million in transportation and transit obligations, 17.1 in water augmentation costs, 45.1 in habitat conservation for that HCP, for a total of $194.5 million. That's the magnitude as of today's projections. But as I think was pointed out, you know, recessions happen, development doesn't happen. I know Councilmember Morton has raised this multiple times. We are a pay-as-you-go organization. What happens if development doesn't happen? Well, one of the things that happens is these costs are going to go up in terms of the post-2020, because if you don't retire the development and generate the funds that we need prior to 2020, those numbers will be higher. So let's talk about CFD fees. The same is true with the community facilities district fees, and this is what I like to call the $72 million question. This is showing what the FORA Community Facilities District generates in terms of fees based upon the development projections of entitled projects and as given to us by the jurisdictions. So that's why you have two. So to 2020, your entitled projects are estimated to generate about $19 million prior to 2020. That's what FORA is going to work with to retire as many of those capital improvement program costs as we possibly can, including habitat. That's all built in to the prioritization that we review every year at the capital improvement program level. Post-2020, on developments that have already been approved but are projected to build after 2020, is in those amounts, relative amounts. That's based on the capital improvement program, based upon the jurisdictional inputs to what development will happen post-2020. That number is about $72 million. Why do we call that out separately from the proposed development? Well, we call it out separately because entitled development is harder to impose brand-new development fees or replacement financing mechanism on. And I know City of Marina is in particular very sensitive to this issue and has recently renegotiated and approved a renegotiated contract with one of their developers to address this part of the issue. I haven't seen the language yet, but I'm believing that that has been adequately addressed so that their developer on that project will continue to pay the equivalent of a FORA CFD, or whatever replacement fee is in play. And at some point, when we get to discussion, I'm certain Councilmember Morton will let us know the details, more the details about that. But in the absence of those kinds of agreements, this is the regional cost. That is what we have to really grapple with. How do we make that money up? Proposed development, those are future developments that may or may not happen. They could be limited by water supply or other kinds of limitations. So it is projected in our CIP, but they are proposed, and it's easier to apply a new fee on a proposed development and replace those funds than it is to replace the funds on entitled development. So with that, let's go right into our key issues. Isn't that a nice slide? Yeah, all right. Here are the big issues, though. Completing the economic recovery, I already alluded to this, base-wide costs and base-wide mitigation measures. That's what the legislature directed FORA to do. That's what FORA has done, and from the staff point, that is why we keep pointing to the capital improvement program. We believe that the majority of those base-wide costs and base-wide mitigation measures are captured in that capital improvement program, and the what and the when is also encapsulated in the capital improvement program. That will need to be replaced as part of a transition plan. If you no longer have a FORA capital improvement program and a FORA revenue generation program, that needs to be addressed. Revenue generation, the same thing. Do you continue the existing financing, which was alluded to and not ruled out by Senator Moning, but we still need to think about, what's that other plan? What happens when the FORA fee really goes away? Do you transition it? Do you say to jurisdictions now, "You know what? Go out, put a CFD on your lands now, today, so when FORA goes away in 2020, we have one, a replacement ready to go." That could be a part of the transition plan. What kind of new system? Is it a tax like the FORA system? Or is it a combination of a nexus base fee like what Tamsie does? Tamsie looks at existing development. They do a fee on future development. It's a relationship issue. What is the impact on our road situation, as opposed to the FORA program, which places, has a little more flexibility in how it weights the fee generation, the revenue generation? So at Fordord, in the early days, the concept was to encourage economic development. So we gave economic development land uses a little bit less, and the residential pays a little bit more. That's how the revenue works. There's policy issues that can be encapsulated in a community facilities district fee that cannot be encapsulated in a nexus fee. So when you're breaking down the system, that's something that you should be considering or thinking about. Revenue sharing. You've got revenue generation, and you have revenue sharing. Those that have development projects will be generating revenues, but there are others who are going to be implementing the program. How do you get those revenues from one jurisdiction to another? So the FORA program does that through its capital improvement program now, but we will have to replace that as FORA sunsets and those mechanisms go away. How is that going to happen? Let's talk about that. Prevailing wage. I heard recently that... I heard recently that when the base reuse plan, when FORA sunsets, the base reuse plan goes out of existence and the master resolution goes out of existence. And that's a little problematic from my hat because, first of all, we have an agreement with the Army that says we are going to comply in the use of our property with the base reuse plan and the master resolution. Most of the deeds, the transfer deeds, refer to both those documents. And I remember early on during discussions, I got asked this question in a transition task force meeting. Sherry, you know, do these go away? Or are the prevailing wage provisions something else? And based at least on one case, the way the court analyzed it, those prevailing wage requirements would be covenants running with the land, which means that they would survive post-FORA. But if there is disagreement about that, or any of the jurisdictions don't believe that that is the case, this is the time to bring up that issue for how we're going to address it, or if they're not going to be addressed at all. I think that is an important discussion point to have. And how are we going to enforce the LAFCO orders that are going to come out assigning, making certain assignments or confirming certain assignments that this board ultimately, when it approves a transition plan, will put forward to LAFCO? I think that's, that's all encapsulated in there. And finally, the implementation plan. We have not called what we've been doing an implementation plan, but let's face it, much of what we've been doing in terms of contract assignment is a major part of an implementation plan. In fact, it's an essential part. And there are two ways to go about an implementation plan. And I've said all along, enforcement is the issue, that if one of the jurisdiction chooses not to do something that LAFCO or that this board says is one of your obligations, some other jurisdiction is going to have to step up to the plate and say, hey, you, you were supposed to do A, B, and C, and you didn't do it. My suspicion is that I have a great transition plan coming down the pike because the lawyers are going to be happy. It will result in litigation. So there are basically three ways to do your implementation plan. Contractual assignment, which is what you have now, and/or agreements. If there are agreements now and that we can see now, that would be great. If there's a revenue sharing agreement between one jurisdiction and another, I think that would be fabulous. And/or litigation. I don't like to suggest litigation. It's kind of the worst-case scenario. But you know, sometimes litigation is good at putting to bed disagreements early on. So if, for example, we know now that there is going to be a lot of disagreement about what has to happen, what FORA sunset has to do, whether the base reuse plan remains in effect and the master resolution, maybe that's a type of litigation now to get a judicial determination in the next year to provide more certainty to the region and to all of the parties to the transition plan. So you don't have the litigation post-2020. And with that, I think I'm going to break for discussion. Back to you, Candy.
Thank you. Are there any questions from board members or any comments from board members on the information that Sherry just presented? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. I wanted to just clarify the revenue replacement. So we have a CFD, which is, I believe, a tax that was voted on to create a tax. And we've kind of, I'm not, I want to make sure we're using the word tax and fee accurately. Can that tax be replaced by fees that do not need to go to a vote?
You know, like everything else, it's complicated. But yes, you can replace the revenues, but there is a policy implication. So for the proposed development, I gotta get the right thing. So when we talk about the proposed development, any place on the base which is uninhabited and has no entitled development and very few landowners, it's fairly straightforward to replace FORA's community facilities district tax, Mellow Roost tax, with a replacement tax to replace that fee. So the revenue generation in those areas is relatively simple. They don't have to do it as a tax. They could do it as a development fee. A development fee is a nexus-based fee, and it uses a different legal standard to create that fee, which means that in the transportation context, and I know we've got Assistant Director Muck here, and he can chime in on this at, from the TAMSY, did I say it right? Zell? Oh, sorry. My eyes are allergic right now, so I'm going to apologize in advance if I, in any case, we have a TAMSY representative here that could help provide additional information. But, for example, in the transportation context, it's my understanding when TAMSY does its nexus analysis, the fundamental change between the tax and FORA's tax and the nexus is that the commercial land uses will pay more because they generate, the theory is they generate more traffic on the transportation system, and the residential uses will pay less because they generate less. They have two cars. They drive one way in the morning and one way back at night. So when you shift to a development fee, it starts to shift those policy pieces in terms of the fee. But you can use a development fee. There are lots, you could use a community reinvestment, a CRIA, an infrastructure-type of financing district. Jurisdictions have a palette of financing opportunities available to them to replace these fees. They all come with certain things. So development fees, you have to do engineering studies. You have to do nexus evaluations. The CRIA, you have to do infrastructure studies and certain things. There are pros and cons to each different replacement financing mechanism. And the jurisdictions that will have the toughest time, I believe, are those that already have entitled development within their jurisdictional boundaries. Those are much harder to replace unless you have agreements in play that the entitled developments have agreed to pay a replacement fee. It's virtually impossible to impose either a development fee on those, any brand-new fee. You can amend an existing fee, but you can't do a brand-new fee. So that's why I keep going back to what I call the $72 million question. That is your harder row to hoe in terms of generating replacement revenues to cover those, those projects. Does that answer your question?
Well, my question, you answered a very good question. But my question was mostly about the mechanisms where a jurisdiction could use a fee that is calculated in some way without having to go, if, in the instance of you have a city already and you impose a new tax, the voters would have to approve of that tax. And when it's not vacant land or very few people, it's a, it's a complicated issue to, to bring forth a new tax. So a fee that replaces a tax might have some things about it that are easier to implement, but you've also pointed out that it's not so simple either. Yeah, thanks.
So Marina is one of those jurisdictions that has a pretty deal over the title of property. And we are currently, we did complete one contract with one of our developers to, where we have an agreement that they will continue to pay when FORA sunsets, the equivalent of whatever is the FORA CFD, the special district, because that's not assigned. They will contractually be obligated to pay that amount going forward, adjusted by the same adjustment factor that we have in place in the FORA CIP. So it'll be adjusted for inflation. We are still working with our other developers because this is really important to us. And from a perspective of the City of Marina, I'm going to use Marina Heights as an example, they gave for the price of the land $10 million, but agreed to pay $44,000 per residential piece of property to FORA as the CFD. So that $44,000 now can reduce to $24,000. But if you look at it this way, from my perspective, dealing and negotiating with these developers, what Mr. Landy, his partnership agreement was, his entity was buying our property, they were agreeing they're going to get this land for $54 million, $44 million coming from 1,000 homes, plus the $10 million they gave us. So now the development fee is down to $24 million. So for that 1,000 homes, $24,000 per, per 1,000 homes, $24 million, plus the $10,000 they gave us, $10 million. They, well, they're only paying $34,000 towards meeting monies that the city, FORA needs, that development fee to get the roads, to get the things that are the impacts. So it's still a very, very positive deal for them. And that's why we were negotiating to say, when FORA leaves, you contracted to pay this at the time in 2007, 2004, when you entered into this contract. We just are asking you to honor that contractual relationship of the value of what you were bringing to the land and the benefits that the City of Marina and this region wanted to accomplish. So the, one of our developers that this development agreement is now coming up for renewal in November has agreed to do that. But that's the thing that I'm asking the county to go forward and to be asking of this of their entitled developers and for the City of Marina to go to Marina Community Partners and the other developers that are already entitled. We're not changing your initial contract terms. We're just asking you to honor them, which requires a new agreement. That's my part of what I wanted to say about what Marina is doing. We're also looking at the City of Marina and immediately creating our own Mellow Roost or our own development fee that would be in place and would spring forth and be effective when FORA sunsets. So if that is in 2020, we're ready. If that's in 2022, we're ready. But that wasn't incumbent on my speaking to have in place because I do understand these obligations, and I'm trying to put into place the right funding.
May I ask a, may I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah, I have another question. I have, perfect, go ahead.
Okay. So just to clarify, and I really appreciate the early effort so people know what the bumps on the road are. I mean, that's a really important thing to do, so kudos. So this is, just to get it straight, this is money that if everything goes the way you want it to, this is money that the developers will pay to Marina? And then that funding will then be distributed similarly, identically, optimistically as it is currently being distributed?
The contract provides for it to be distributed to us or the agencies that are assuming the obligations. So if roads are being assumed by TAMSY, we will distribute money to TAMSY. We do this already for others.
Right, right.
We know how to do that. Water augmentation, which is one of the costs up here, MCWD is indicating that, at least at the last DPA meeting, that they have the funding mechanism and will collect that from the developers independent from this fee. So if, if-
If that carves out.
If that is carved out, then we're not worried about that. But one of the key problems that we have is the habitat portion. Because you cannot connect the habitat management plan to a nexus, that the implementation of a new development fee, we need to work on that. So that's one of the questions is, yes, our commitment is, if the $6,600 might change, just 30% goes to the habitat management, that that's what we're going to send to this new entity. It's always been determined that habitat management is in perpetuity, that you have to have somebody managing that endowment and taking on that responsibility. So whoever that is, whatever that is, we'll send the 30%. So if that's built into the contract, this is not going into Marina's general funds. This is money that's going to be distributed and committed to fulfilling what our obligations are, whether we take those on and then we would be reimbursing ourselves versus they go to other agencies. So, but the question that I did want to have-
So Ms. Morton, I'm going to intervene for just one moment. There was another question on the dialogue that just took place. Senator Munnings?
Thank you. I, I don't want to cut you off, but it is pertinent to what we've just been discussing. And I appreciate the illustration. And just so I'm clear, you gave, I think Marina Heights is the example where there's a contractual development, contract. How many other entitled projects does Marina have?
Marina Heights has, Marina Heights, one developer, Mr. Landy, still has 63 minutes of his private rolling. We anticipate, what's represented to us as the city is there will only be approximately 21 minutes not, or which permits will not be pulled prior to FORA's 2020 sunset. So I'm missing those 21 minutes, so it's the city.
Right.
And then we have Marina Community Partners, which is the homes that you see over here. And those homes are in phase, are in phases, phase one, phase two, phase three. They've taken down, try to look for phase one only. So we would be looking to them with the same common principle of what was negotiated.
Right. But already in a contractual agreement, is the agreement of the developer to pay the, the CFD fees, is that accurate? And so why, why does that have to be renegotiated if it's already a subject of an existing contract?
Because Mellow Roost law, state law, does not allow FORA to assign this Mellow Roost CFD to other entities.
So in other words, you have to renegotiate as, as Marina?
Yes.
But your, are the developers, you gave the one example, they're open to continuing that obligation?
That is my understanding.
Right.
And they're working very hard to get the right-
And what I also heard is that Marina remains committed to directing the portion of those fees that would be appropriately shared with or conveyed to, whether it's TAMSY or other Habitat Protection, whatever the existing obligations are, Marina would continue to honor those obligations?
Yes.
And it, that's not necessarily found in the contract with the developer, or is it?
It is provided for in the contract with the developer. But I think it's somebody just providing it to vice manager. The language is, the city shall be responsible for distributing such applicable portions of the new fee to other regional agencies if they need to assume obligations that were previously funded by the FORA fee. I'm reading contract language.
Right.
So the answer to your question is yes.
Yeah. Good. And that's helpful, and I, I will, I'll stop there. There's, this just sparks all kinds of interesting conversation. Right? Good. But thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I was going to make a comment. Actually, Ms. Morton, if you could provide a copy of that agreement, I understand it was approved by your city council with that language. I know you've read it. But it's good to have it in writing to, to be able to distribute for others who might be going forward on future contract negotiations, among other things. So that would be greatly appreciated by FORA staff and FORA in terms of moving forward.
Okay. Thank you for allowing me to intervene there. You have a second question?
I just wanted to ask a quick question because in going forward, these different mechanisms that was Cynthia's question about whether to use a development fee, which is a nexus study, versus a Mellow Roost CFD, the City of Marina is grappling with that and trying to figure out if there are accommodations that we can use. Because you cannot use a development fee, there is no nexus for that habitat management. So what- So what, when we're crafting our new fund structure for those properties that are not entitled going forward, okay, now I just talked about what's entitled, I'm trying to put into place something that will continue to generate funds for future entitlements. And the development fee, a nexus study, does not enable us to capture that six thousand, six hundred dollars, sixty-six hundred for the habitat management. So then we have to use the CFD. The CFD doesn't allow us to capture money for light renewal. And as so many people know, Marina has the biggest portion of remnants of buildings that are no longer usable, they're just light. So the question that I don't know, I was going to ask Sherry, is can a development fee, because if we're trying to generate sufficient funds, would a development fee be also so restricted that we do not include costs of light renewal?
Wow. Have to really kind of think about that. It's really hard to-
We can answer that later.
I, I think that's a, a great thing, but I'm going to pose this as a, as a, a suggestion for your consultants to look at. Just thinking about the habitat, Marina does have a habitat management area inside the jurisdictional boundaries, so there may be some opportunities to capture long-term management of your, your habitat management area as part of a development fee. Just pointing that out. It does depend, obviously, on what happens with the transition plan and the habitat conservation plan, which we've talked about at various times about, you know, what's the Plan B if there is not a basewide habitat conservation plan? Do we go into a different kind of an option where each individual jurisdiction might be responsible for managing its own habitat management areas? And the funds that are on hand at FORA would be used to create some kind of an endowment or some kind of a trust fund or something to allow and help support those individual jurisdictional obligations? Doesn't address all the problems, but just for your consultants.
And if in fact the habitat management is not a basewide plan, but it becomes a jurisdictional responsibility, those mechanisms already exist in state law, and so we're not worried about that, it would be a question about how we would allocate, how much we know of them. And so of course, city of Marina would ask for their portion of what they contributed to manage, whatever their lands are.
That's our responsibility. So, oh yeah, I covered up the mic, sorry. I didn't answer the building removal. I think it's a little bit more of a complicated, I, I haven't analyzed that in terms of development fees. In general, development fees can be used for anything that you can establish a nexus to, but you need engineering studies to, to do it. The, the complication with using a development fee or actually funding it that way, and, and one of the issues about building removal, and we're going to talk about building removal a little bit later in today, as a transition plan or as a policy issue going forward, is hazardous materials and the other things that are a part of those buildings that make them riskier to remove. They also provide the bar for private funding to come in because of those hazardous materials. There's a lot of reticence about jumping in and, and financing things like, like that. So I, I, I don't know a hundred percent the answer, but that's my, based on what I know.
So if I may, it, it, the FORA obligation for building removal within the city of Marina is the stockade. So whether FORA continues or not, Marina has the obligation or the responsibility, or we live, looking like we do today, to try to figure out a funding mechanism to address the remainder of these buildings. That exists, whether FORA exists, goes away, doesn't matter. That's why I'm trying to look at what is in my best interest as a city for the creation of a development fee that addresses this albatross.
And, and so we are going to be talking about that. It is an item on the agenda. And the, your staff and the other jurisdiction staff at admin, the administrative committee level, have been talking about, is there anything that this board can and should do now, as a policy matter now, to address that regional impact of what the region sees and what the jurisdictions are going to bear and have to grapple with going forward? And I will outline that a little bit, bit later, but I, I think it might get to some of your, your issue.
Thank you.
Other questions at this point? Ms. Adams?
Thank you. Just a, a quick question, and I think it was sort of almost like an aside, but I'm, I am wondering regarding the base use plan expiration, when FORA retires. I feel like we need to have a really very clear legal opinion of that because that's going to decide, going to drive so many of the decisions that we end up making. The other thought that I had is listening to these, the comments and the questions that have been brought forward, I don't think that they're policy questions as much as there are, as they are absolute legal questions that need to be answered, that will help us move forward with the transition plan. So my hope and expectation is, as we're, as these various things are coming up, that we're capturing those so that we can come back and have some real definitive responses so that we know where we're going to be headed.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, discussion at this point? Okay, let's, tell me what you're doing, sorry.
I'm sorry. I, I didn't hear any comments at all. I heard a lot of comments on revenue generation, and I think Ms. Morton's language does capture, I think, the revenue sharing component of that because if I understand your language correctly, if there is concurrence on transition plan, that everything in the capital improvement program is going to be done, and the county of Monterey takes on the Davis Road, building the Davis Road obligations, that Marina's developers, that developer, will be paying a portion of its fees to the county of Monterey for the Davis Road revenue generation obligations. That, did I understand that right?
That we are paying to whoever takes on the responsibility. So if that's the county, if that's Tamsi, if that's MCWD, that's still looking to get collected from the CFD, we are committed.
And let me ask you this, because you raised an issue about water and, and, I'm going to apologize in advance, but I'm going to ask the question because I think everybody needs to think about that. Our capital improvement program development fees are based on a completion of an entire capital improvement program, which includes water augmentation. So if MCWD takes over a funding of all or part of that obligation, there's going to have to be probably some kind of allocation between the entitlement piece of it, and if they can capture everything, the CFD is going to adjust. So under the FORA's program, we would be adjusting the community facilities district fees based on offloading those to another agency. And the same thing with the transportation agency of Monterey County is for new development, easy, for entitled development, not as easy. So there still could be a piece of, a break, a, a reduction or a change in the numbers based on that.
And anticipating that, that is why the language is, that the developer will pay the CFD equivalent, whatever it is, as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty, or the date FORA sunsets.
Okay.
Is because we anticipate in the next two years, that may go up, doubtful, but it may go down.
Fabulous.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Edenwood?
Can't see with all the lights here. Yet one of the major obligations we have is habitat management, and I understand the importance of that and so forth, but you're looking at the amount of money that post twenty-twenty, we're looking at forty-five million dollars. The main habitat within Delray Oaks is the Frog Pond. It's been there, I've, I've lived in the area since fifty-nine. It hasn't changed much, and we haven't hurt that habitat whatsoever. And I suspect a lot of the habitat and other land use jurisdictions around here are not that endangered thus far. Yes, we do have to look for habitat, but the, the fact of the matter is, for twenty years, this organization, FORA, has, has presented all the information Sacramento has wanted to come up with an, a habitat conservation program. And, and Sacramento sat on it and sat on it and sat on and saddened on it. And since that time, with inflation and with additional responsibilities, that eight, that habitat management plan has gotten larger and larger and larger, where it's the second largest obligation we have. Is there any way possible, I know you're doing a million things, but there's got to be a way we can negotiate forty-five million dollars or come up with some sort of a, a reasonable amount where we can meet our habitat obligations without being taken to the cleaners, all the five land use jurisdictions?
I, I don't know, there's a comment, but we will get to that. We, FORA staff did present a, kind of a backup plan. So what happens if that habitat conservation plan can't be finally and successfully completed either before transition, before there's an order from LAFCA that says, this is what your plan is? We will not have an HCP prior to March of two thousand nineteen or June of two thousand nineteen. If we get one at all, it will be later than that, it's very possible it will be challenged. And so what is the backup plan? What is FORA going to do with that, those revenues that by board policy, by the way, we have set aside thirty percent? It's not, it's thirty percent. That is the current board policy that could be adjusted if they needed to. But that number, that fund, that thirty percent is projected to be up at twenty-one million dollars in twenty-twenty. So, you know, the, the option is a different kind of a system to protect the basewide habitat. That is the obligation that we have under the Habitat Management Plan, which is the federal program that is included in all of our deeds, is that Habitat Management Plan and a basewide program of some sort to protect that habitat. And, you know, right now, I'm thinking trust fund, escrow account, maybe individual jurisdiction, turn it over. There are a lot of different ways you could structure that, but that's kind of what we're thinking. We are considering a backup plan for that.
Other questions or comments at this point?
Thanks. Yes, just a general comment. I mean, some of these issues, and this will probably come up in other areas, but just as a general comment, there are a number of these issues that it's great we're discussing them here at FORA, but they're not going to get decided by the FORA board. They're, whether it's how the ESCA follow-up is going to be handled, whether it's the habitat issue, do we stay with the Habitat Management Plan and how is that administered? Or do we try to continue with a Habitat Conservation Plan that's basewide? And how does that get done? What's the entity? You know, a lot of those things, and to a certain extent, some of the local roads, those are things that are going to be hammered out. Each jurisdiction that has responsibility is going to do its due diligence, and then those jurisdictions need to talk to each other and work those things out, and then come back to FORA and say, you can help us with this, or never mind, we've got it worked out. So as I say, I think it's good we're talking about it here, but I think whether it's Marina, Seaside, the county, Delray Oaks, city of Monterey, we need to be looking at, what are our questions? What are the things that we have a stake in? And then we need to talk to the people that we're going to be working with, and those are the other jurisdictions by and large, and Tamsi probably. So I think, as I say, I think it's good to have this discussion, but I hope that all the jurisdictions, like Marina clearly is, you know, working this way down the path and probably others are too, that the conversations that, that work a lot of this stuff out are going to be between those jurisdictions.
And so I, I just have a follow-up question or interaction there. Is it your suggestion then that the transition plan, as we have it currently structured, needs to be much more simple and just focus on certain things like the administrative liabilities and that those capital improvement programs, revenue generation, revenue sharing, things or items that are in, that we've been showing as these costs are worked out by agreement with the jurisdictions? That, did I understand that right?
That's what I think is realistic, yeah. That FORA's obligation is, how do you wrap up your per's obligation and that stuff? And, and a lot of this is, it's sort of beyond FORA's ability to, to, to try to work all this detail out. It's going to be between the jurisdictions, and the sooner those conversations get started, the sooner we're going to have a transition plan, it seems to me. And I could just say, the, you know, this, the shape of this has really only emerged in the last month or two, and that's a very short timeline for jurisdictions with a lot of obligations to, to sort out what's possible, what's doable, what, how might we approach this, and then to have these conversations. So I think, I hope, I think we can do it, but it's going to be a very compressed timeline for the jurisdictions who are going to take on these obligations and figure out how we're going to make it work going forward.
I'm going to intervene again because I think this is an important point, and you can certainly back me off if I'm misreading this. At the beginning, I think Ms. Damon presented the idea that in order for the plan to go forward, for the FORA board to be able to implement or present a plan, there needed to be some either agreements, contractual agreements, litigation, something to start making these decisions. So I am going to suggest that based on Ms. Parker's comments just now, where she, as I heard it, suggests that there be agreements among the jurisdictions. Are there any other comments from other participants here today on that topic? You want to discuss it later? Because we need to get to those kinds of conversations. Okay, Ms. Morton, and then, and then Ms. Garfield?
So I, I'm not sure how many interdenominational agreements we need to have. As much as that the city of Marina was looking for FORA to come up with a transition plan, transition plan of what is the assignment of the obligations to, for example, roads to Tamsi? What does that look like? What the city analysis would then have been, what is the impact on the city of Marina? A, we need to figure out how we get the CFD equivalent for the entitled projects, which we're working on. We've already are trying to anticipate these problems. I don't need to get in an agreement with the county if Tamsi is taking the roads. And Tamsi is in the business of doing roads. So from the city of Marina's standpoint, we know how to do that of sending our money, collecting our money, sending our money. The counterbalance that we're looking at, what's the additional administrative cost for doing that? Probably pretty nominal because we already do this. Yes, we will collect the CFD rather than FORA, but the addition of that administrative cost probably does not exceed the twenty-eight thousand that we pay to sit here as members and membership. So what, what the Transition Task Force initially looked at, and we've kind of lost sight of this in, in getting to this agreement type of thing, was what's the funding? What funding still will exist for everybody to fulfill the functions and what fundings need to be replaced? And we figured out in the Transition Task Force in earlier years that when FORA sunsets, the one thing that was not assignable was the Melo Russe on the existing entitled projects. That's the nut that Marina is sitting, trying to tackle. And going forward, there's no CFD on the rest of Marina's land within the Ford, former Ford or boundaries, is how do I put something into place to make the funding mechanism to fulfill these functions? I want Davis Road to be improved to facilitate what you need. I also want my Del Monte extension. And if that money is coming from Seaside, then great. So I'm not seeing this as, I don't want to get bogged down into creating new contracts, but really give us a transition plan. That's Marina. We didn't send any, any comment because there is no transition plan for which we could review, analyze, and comment. And everybody that sits in these Transition Task Force meetings- Transition Task Force meetings, I raise questions continuously along these lines, and we still don't have it in front of us. But I don't want to get bogged down in that instead of just looking at how do you transition as required by state law, that now we're off in corners trying to figure out how we negotiate with each other. So to that extent, I'm not in agreement.
And could I just respond to that? I think what I'm thinking about, not so much the revenue stuff because each jurisdiction needs to figure that out, but some of the shared obligations like ESCA. We could meet now and say, who's going to take the lead? The feds have said we want one entity. Okay, who's that entity? And can we agree who's going to take the lead and how we're going to make that work? I think we can figure that out. Habitat, we can start now with, are we going to start a JPA for, all we have in place is the Habitat Management Plan, which has the obligations jurisdiction by jurisdiction. And how are we, that's, do we want to pursue, do we, the jurisdictions with Habitat, do we want to pursue the base-wide plan that's been being discussed for 20 years and we still don't have it? Maybe we're getting close, maybe we're not, but how are we going to deal with the Habitat obligations? There is some money set aside. What are we going to, we could, we can sit down now and start to figure that out. The individual jurisdiction obligations are definitely not necessarily needed to be discussed, but ESCA and Habitat are the ones that I was thinking about, that the jurisdictions can work out, I think, pretty quickly right away.
Just to respond, I know, Jane, you haven't been at these Transition Task Force meetings, but we have been talking about those things. So, for example, ESCA, we all heard that the Army wants to deal with one entity. At the Transition Task Force meetings, we were informed there's a contract already in existence, Fora, the Army, the county, where the county would be the substitute agency if Fora goes away. The ESCA, what the county needs to understand is, whoa, we don't want this. No. Our executive director went to Washington DC with somebody else, thank you, and secured $6.8 million amendment, monetary contribution, an amendment to our agreement with the Army for the PLL insurance, that this is, that's what we got before, the 98 million, but this, that agreement has now been an additional 6.8 million that will go with whoever takes the ESCA responsibility. So that's what everybody here needs to, kind of, that's why I'm going to the funding mechanisms, is what is the funding mechanism that comes with the responsibility? That's what my city wants to analyze. That's what TMC wants to analyze, MCWD, and you as the county. So if you know you're getting 6.8 million to fulfill the function of ESCA, which is a monetary, it's different. It's not, you're not, we're anticipating that the actual cleanup under the $98 million public liability, what's the name of that, PLL insurance?
The cost cap policy with AIG.
Yes, but AIG is going to cover all of that expense and
Only through March 30 next year.
Two or three different contracts, actually.
Okay.
So, but essentially
But the monitoring that's going to happen after 2020, 6.8 million. And that's, so now this Habitat, we kicked this around at the Transition Task Force over and over and over, is is there any feasible way we're going to raise $45 million or $60 million? Is that even feasible? It's, we've been here, sitting here for 26 years, and we have 19 million. And so what are we doing? And is that an albatross that we can't crack? Should we restructure it? That's something the Board needs to decide now. That's something that we need to really understand. And I don't think a lot of us know what our alternatives are, but we should be finding out. And then how do we, who does it? Is it a new entity? Do we all manage our own? I agree with that we need to have that discussion.
I just have one comment. So we were talking a lot about contracts. I did need to correct a contract error that's in your draft transition report because I understand the staff are working from that June 8 draft transition report. And with respect to ESCA, there is a reference to who the successor must be under a contract, and I cite a paragraph, it's like 5.2.2. The contract that I cited to was the AOC, which is the Administrative Order on Consent. That's not the right contract. It's actually that funding contract in one of the service attachments to that initial 98 million that we got, where we purchased the cost cap. That cost cap will, is paying for most of what we need to do, hopefully, but it expires in March of 2019. If everything is not completed, I'm just going to let you know that that is going to cause some issues. There is a financial issue potential coming down the pike, a transfer issue coming down the pike. There's some other issues that could come down the pike if those timelines and that policy does not remain in effect. Sorry.
Okay. Ms. Morton, I was, I'm going to ask
I just want to do a follow-up. What page and what line was that correction? Just so we can all mark ours. Thank you.
Okay. So Sheri will look for that, and we'll report it back out in just a moment. Ms. Garfield?
Thank you. This is sort of a little bit of a shift because we kind of went off. I wanted to say how glad I am to think that the, I mean, Pacific Grove doesn't have as much skin in this game. I get that. But an equitable distribution and outcome is in everybody's best interest, so I want to weigh in on that. I truly appreciate hearing that some work's getting done, and there's an eagerness to get more work done on what works and how can these things work. Because it's only when we know what can't work that we know where we need to have alternatives. And so when we looked at the side-by-side of transition versus a, some version continuation of Fora, it was all contingent upon what the best resolutions were. So I think only by having the county negotiating, I mean, hard and fast and getting decisions made to know where it can't be done, that we know where we need another entity or another mechanism. So I, just watching the sidelines, wanting a good outcome for everybody, I really appreciate hearing that.
Thank you.
Sorry. Give me that mic. So the answer to the question is on page 25. It's in Chapter Six of the Draft Transition Plan. The ESCA Services slash Cleanup at the bottom of the page, it says notations. It says AOC 5.2.2 requires Monterey County LAFCO to designate Fora's successor and limits the successor to the following Monterey County, Seaside, Marina, or Joint Powers Agency. That reference is not the AOC. It's the ESCA grant. It's on page 25 of the original June 8 draft transition plan. It's on the original, because I understand that's what your staff has been working with. That's what I was told they were working with. It's on page 25, at the very bottom of the page.
So those who have the transition plan draft in Chapter Six, page 25.
The Environmental Services Cooperative Agreement, the reference is on page two of your board report under ESCA. The actual reference is 5.2.2 in the actual contract with the Environmental Services Cooperative Agreement, which is the funding entity for providing for munitions removal.
So back to the key considerations discussion that we were having. We've touched a little bit on the, on completing the economic recovery. Do you want to go back and have more discussion on that at this point, or shall we keep moving forward and come back at a later time?
I feel like we need, again, that really definitive legal determination on whether or not we go with what we have, or whether we start talking about something new. So maybe there are other elements that we should be looking at.
Okay. Does anyone need clarification on what that means or how we would do that?
If I can summarize, Supervisor, the way I understood your comment is, your comment is, it's pretty difficult to move forward with a transition plan unless we have a legal determination that the base reuse plan and the master resolution continue post Fora sunset. Did I get that right? That's what I thought I heard from you.
Yeah, thank you so much. That's exactly it.
And of course, I think during the transition planning process, the Transition Task Force and the TAC, that issue was discussed and raised two and a half years ago. And my response at that time was their covenants running with the land, that they do not expire, that they have been, at least one court has made that interpretation as to the plans, where they've been included in the transfer documents. That being said, that court was also looking at a set of facts that did not include the Fora organization being not in existence. So, all right.
So do we need any further comments on this at this point? Mr. Edelen?
Yeah, just a question I've forgotten. We may have gone over this in previous meetings, but the National Monument consists of 17,000 acres of the original 27,000 acres. Who's responsible for the conservation of habitat and of the fauna and flora out there? Who's actually responsible?
That would be the federal government, BLM, the Bureau of Land Management.
Do we know if they've set money aside for that by any chance?
Mr. Hulamard?
As in the case of most things at Fort Ord, they're all complicated. And with respect to the management and all the obligations for preserving habitat on the properties, the 14,500 acres that are the National Monument, it's the obligation of the federal government. That's similarly true when it comes to the state park areas along the beachfront. They are financially obligated and responsible for those. To the extent that jurisdictions on Fort Ord or other entities that are building infrastructure or other things on Fort Ord want to get credit for the conservation that occurs on state or federal lands as part of our regional program, those lands are also a part of our Habitat Conservation Plan. And when we collect funds, some of those go into a reserve to assist and assure that the federal government and the state government have sufficient funds to manage their habitat.
Thank you. Yes. Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Sheri, do you happen to have the case name or citation that you referenced as to the covenants running with the land that's to the base reuse plan?
I do, and I can email you the exact site later, but it's the Building Trades case. It's actually a labor case with respect specifically to prevailing wage requirements.
And I could send it out to the entire board?
I can send it out to everybody. I mean, it's included in my other staff, I've included it multiple times in other staff reports, so not a problem.
Well, I'm old, so I forget where it is. Thank you very much.
Okay. So, again, what I'm doing right now, it's 10:30. I'm sensing that we need to probably stand up and let blood run through our brains again. But before we do that, I just want to double check again. Are there any other comments on the, one of the key considerations being complete the economic recovery? Again, we're not looking for a hard decision, but are there comments on that topic? Okay, on revenue generation, talking about continuing existing financing or coming up with new systems. We've had quite a bit of discussion on that. Are there any additional comments at this time? Okay, the third item was revenue sharing, and we've touched on some of that at this point. Are there any additional comments that people would like to make? Any further discussion? Okay. Sheri is just noting to me that it talks about prioritization issues also. Can we comment on that a little bit? And then we'll take a break. Okay, sorry. Senator Monti.
I'm just curious if the other jurisdictions that share the footprint of Fora Land, Seaside, Delray Oaks, Monterey County, have any of those jurisdictions engaged in contract review as Marina is in looking at contracts moving forward, addressing the CFD issue? And if you don't have answers to that now, I'd just be curious in some feedback later to get a sense if other jurisdictions are looking at that. Thank you.
Okay.
May I respond to that point? Just in our board meetings, there has been that comment made. Hopefully, Seaside, for example, is currently in a negotiation. So I don't know if they have, but the point about doing this is in the next two years while we're here, that any contracts that are going forward need to include both provisions so that it is in place, that this CFD that would go to Fora, that it can be contractually addressed right now, and we should not be waiting to Band-Aid.
Right. And I would think that contractual reference, it doesn't even have to assume what the future transition plan is. It protects the jurisdiction. So it's perhaps already been done, but I think it would be helpful if Marina shared that contract language
We're on board.
with the other jurisdictions. And it sounds like some of the other jurisdictions maybe have a response to that. Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and board members, the county of Monterey is reviewing those agreements. Our county council's office is working on that. So just to answer the question.
Thank you, Mr. Chilos. Any other comment on that?
Yes, please. And the City of Seaside understands the need for revenue moving forward, and we have already changed agreements with developers moving forward and fully expect to do so as the process moves forward. We'll be, Seaside will protect itself and the region more than adequately as we move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mailen. Member Edelen?
Yep. We're in negotiation with a developer for part of our land at Fort Ord, and part of the development is for that developer to pay for a development fee that would be implemented on him. Of course, we determined what the fee would be, but it would be all part of the same negotiation. So if worse came to worse, we would be able to implement our own fee.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments on the revenue sharing portion of the key issues at this point in time? All right. One more. Yes, Mr. Edelen.
Just from a philosophical point of view, this board was created to look at a regional approach to the issues of development on Fort Ord, the problems, habitat, transportation, so forth. It's been a regional. And for most of the time that I've been on the board and the boards existed, it hasn't been a regional approach. People have pulled together. The delegates have done very well in doing this. What I'm seeing right now, though, is we're approaching a possible sunsetting in two years, some of the, some of the land use jurisdictions are thinking, we don't want to be part of the Fora anymore, and they're going their own ways. But the last two years, they're going to try and get as much of the pie as possible, either the exclusion of, or maybe not the exclusion of, the other land use jurisdictions. I'd just like to caution everybody, we either do this together, we work together. We may not all agree on the capital improvement program. Some folks like some issues, others don't. We may or may not like other aspects of what's going on. But if we start splitting off and voting our own interests and not looking at the good of the entire, it's going to really fracture, and we're going to have a lot more difficult time. I just see that happening over the last couple of board meetings, and I see what's happening in the future. So we either hang together, we will mostly surely hang separately on this thing. I just hope we keep this regional approach.
Thank you. So before we go into discussion about the policy enforcement or the implementation plan related to the plan related to the key issues, I'm going to suggest that we take a 10-minute break. It is almost 25 minutes to 11:00. Please be back by quarter to 11:00. Thank you so much.